...made when I was a kid. And so, I think it's really important that kids in the city get a taste of what art thinking could be like.
He's showing the participants, who are all teens, about doing his kind of art, you know, doing street art, which is where he got started, sort of the ideas at the library. He uses very bold colors and he tells us that he got those bold colors from looking at tropical fish books at the library.
For me, it's about trying to empower the youth of our city and strap them with, you know, knowledge of art.
We're more than just books and magazines and videos and DVDs, we're a cultural center. And so, you know, that's what First Duke got into the library, because he needed a place that was cooler, but he also thought of it as a community center. Maybe 10 or 15 years, we'll have an art card from one of these students, that would be nice.
The library has lots of other great programs. To learn more, visit lapl.org/events. From traditional cultural performances, food tastings, and family activities, the Ashagatsu Family Festival highlighted Japanese tradition and brought the community together.
Happy New Year!
It's an opportunity for us to celebrate the new year, to ring in the new year, but also to give back to our community, our local community, as well as to our members with an extraordinary day of high-energy, cultural celebration, entertainment.
We're so grateful that we have the opportunity to get a taste of the Japanese culture.
Things about each culture that are really important and that make every person an individual, but also brings people together.
How fun was that? Well, for more events at the Japanese-American National Museum, visit j a n m dot org. Well, if you ask me what a fun night looks like, I'd say good food, good wine, and good friends. What can be better than that? Well, Union Station was the place to be for all those things.
2020 Uncorked Wine Festival, woo-woo! Oh, to drink all the wine, there's 150 different vendors, so we will for sure be hitting each one of those up.
We have about 60 wineries from across the globe, gourmet food trucks, photo booths, live band, DJ, lots of fun stuff for people to come and enjoy with their friends.
Everybody's got a taste in room, but events like this bring so many different people into one location. Really good wine, good friends, hopefully a little bit of trouble, just a little bit.
As you notice, like, there's a lot of great, like, vibe around here. The energy's so high, everybody's so happy.
The community is gonna be up and popping when you come to events like this, because it's free pouring, lots of vino, lots of sparkly bubbly, but it actually shows that, you know, LA still has that love, that energy for the community.
We will be back again in June to do a summer version this year.
A Happy New Year to everybody, and may this 2020 be spectacular.
How do you get your voice heard when it comes to community issues? Well, there's a city department called Empower LA that encourages you to play a bigger role in your local government. Saeda Pagan sat down with the new head of the department. Saeda.
Thanks, Yana. Today, we are in conversation with Raquel Beltran, the new general manager of the Los Angeles Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. She spoke to me about her vision for Empower LA. You were appointed a few months ago, so tell us what you've been doing in that time. I know you've been hard at work, meeting with some of these councils.
Well, I initiated a listening tour with the neighborhood councils, and I average six neighborhood councils a week. I've been able to visit about 59 neighborhood councils, and it has been a wonderful experience, talking and listening with the elected leadership from the communities all over Los Angeles.
A lot of public officials have gotten their start with the neighborhood councils. Tell us how that's possible.
That's my favorite part of this system. Whenever anybody decides that they're going to start interfacing with government, start attending government meetings, start figuring out what avenues exist in order for you to be able to express yourself, your thoughts, and to serve your community, you've already taken a step forward in learning how to govern, how to become an elected official.
My name is Lily Larson. I'm 17, and I've been an activist since I was five. There is no age too young to get involved in your community. Let's come together and make change for the highest good, for our neighborhoods, for our city, our state, our country, and our planet.
What I see happening rapidly is an increase in the number and the experience that young people are developing by being elected and appointed to serve on these neighborhood councils. The numbers are increasing all over the city.
We're both running for positions in the city of Van Nuys, and we just want to get more information on how to start building our campaign, and also getting information on how we can make our city better, and what are specific roles that we can do to make our community a lot better.
They are energetic, they're inspired by other young people around the world who are getting engaged for a variety of reasons in their communities and in global issues, and the neighborhood council system provides people that opportunity.
Now, I'm sure there are people who are watching, who would like to get involved, so give us some first steps.
So, I encourage people to start by just going to our website, empowerla.org, research which neighborhood council is near your home, attend those meetings. I always tell people, just go check it out, see what's happening, get on the list so that you can start receiving the agenda, so that you can become familiar with what they're discussing, start attending the meetings, and then when you feel comfortable, throw your hat in the ring, become a candidate. Ask the Neighborhood Empowerment Advocate to help you in that process, to help you learn more about it, they're available to give you that kind of support.
Well, thank you so much for empowering us by giving us this great information.
It's my pleasure.
Empower LA!
Do your part to help beautify a local elementary, enjoy an evening benefiting Friends of the LA River, and take in a live outdoor music show. All this and things to do. Join Human Rights Campaign LA for their annual Day of Service. Volunteers are encouraged to spend a day being of service to Wal Grove Elementary School, doing campus beautification activities in honor of the service, work, and life of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. The HCR MLK Day of Service happens Monday, January 20th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. For more info, look for their event on signup.com. Join the good folks at Mohawk Bend for River Fest 2019, a very special event benefiting the Friends of the Los Angeles River. Sip on local brews while you chat with fellow Angelinos who are working towards urban river revitalization. Enjoy a river-themed playlist, raffle prizes, and more. The third annual River Fest happens Saturday, January 18th, beginning at 12 noon. For more info, visit folar.org. Ease into your new year with an afternoon of outdoor music brought to you by So Far Los Angeles. This music collective puts together live, open-air shows featuring three different acts curated to give audiences a diverse musical experience. Saturday, January 18th, we'll see the group Soul Flow take center stage at a secret location. Soul Flow at So Far Sounds begins at 3:00 p.m. For ticket information, visit sofar sounds dot com. Would you like to learn how to master wig making in one day, even if you've never used a sewing machine? Well, Fingas Beauty Academy is going to unveil all the secrets to lace front and lace closure wig making in a hands-on, eight-hour wig-making class. If you're ready to take your skills to the next level, or just try something new for 2020, reserve your spot today. The Fingas Beauty Academy Hands-On Wig Making Class happens Sunday, January 19th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. For more, visit lacelock.net. For the fourth year, Lee's Market and the Brothers of Iota Zeta Lambda are pulling out all the stops for the MLK Day of Service. This local fraternity chapter will once again be passing out toys and providing meals in honor of Dr. King's birthday. Join the festivities Sunday, January 19th, beginning at 12:00 noon at Lee's Market Takeout. If you need more info, send an email to leesmarketcatering@sbcglobal.net. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of LA This Week.
Hi, I'm Daniel Kim with the City of Los Angeles Department of Aging. We're here to improve the quality of life, independence, health, and dignity of the older adults and family caregivers who live in our city. We have programs and services that cover a wide variety of issues facing both older adults and caregivers. Many of our direct services are provided through our local multipurpose senior centers. Our centers have access to care management, nutrition services, transportation, evidence-based programs, and more. They're also a great place for you to connect with others in your own community. If you don't know where to start, our helpful information and assistant staff are here to help. We're able to connect you to your local center and other resources like health insurance counseling, elder abuse resources, and even job training opportunities. Also, did you know that if you provide unpaid assistance to an older adult spouse, family member, neighbor, or friend, you're a family caregiver? We have resources for you through our department's family caregiver training and support. For more information and resources, you can call us at 213-482-7252, or simply dial 311. You can also check out our website at aging.lacity.org. Together, let's make Los Angeles the best age-friendly city in the world.
Los Angeles County has one of the highest homeless populations in the nation. Many of our homeless neighbors are veterans, women, children, survivors of domestic violence, and working individuals who can't keep up with housing costs. You could do something about it by volunteering for the 2020 Greater Los Angeles Homeless Count on January 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. Sign up at theycountwillyou.org, because everyone counts, no matter where they live.
Good morning, members. If you can please have your seat. Good morning and welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, January 14th, 2020. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Let's run through the agenda.
Bloomingville, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Harris Dawson, Weesar, Corretts, Kukorian, Lee, Martinez, O'Farrow, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, thirteen members in a quorum. Madam President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Rodriguez moves in Mr. Lee's seconds. What's next?
Commendatory resolutions.
Mr. Corretts moves and Mr. Harris Dawson's seconds. Next.
Madam President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
So everyone, can we all please rise for the flag salute? Councilmember Buscaino, would you please do us the honor of leading us in our flag salute?
With great honor, Madam President. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members, if I can direct you, your attention to the agenda. Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and run through this agenda.
Items one through six are items noticed for public hearing. There is a request to continue those items to Wednesday, January 15th, 2020.
Without objection, that will be the order. Next item.
Items seven through 26 are items through which public hearings have been held.
Members, are there any specials on these items? Seeing now, let's go ahead and open the row. Close the row and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, what's next?
Items 27 and 28 are items through which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are not before us, members. Are there any cards on any of these items?
Madam President, there are cards on 27 and 28.
And let's go ahead and hold those items.
Madam President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special are general public comment.
Very well, let's go ahead and move on to our presentations. Mr. Wesson, are you ready? Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Madam President and members. Let me first wish everybody a happy and healthy New Years. And for all that are here, why don't we just give ourselves a round of applause? Because we made it to the year 2020. You know what? Every time, Madam President and members, every time I walk into this building, I have to pinch myself to see if this is a dream. I say that because I grew up on the rough and tumble streets of Cleveland, Ohio. The odds were that people like me, like many of us that are here today, would never have the opportunity to be in a place like this and to have some say in how we move the great city of Los Angeles forward. I think about all of the little boys and girls that I went to school with whose lives were cut short due to senseless violence. I think about the classmates of mine, and I'm sure of yours, who somewhere in life they zigged when they should have zagged and they wound up incarcerated. I think about those who, for whatever reason, joined a gang. I think about those that unfortunately fell into some form of drug addiction or alcohol addiction. And I have to pinch myself every day that I've made it through a very difficult time. And I know many of you have stories very, very similar to mine. It is my honor to present to you today an individual who grew up on the rough and tumble streets of New York City and at a very young age believed that this country was founded based on the desire to provide second chances to individuals. And he committed his life to doing just that, trying to fix the broken, straighten out those that had been bent, and giving second lives to human beings, not just in the city of New York, but eventually throughout this world. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like for you to give a round of applause to the great pastor and great founder for Victory Outreach International, Sonny Oguzoni. Pastor, Pastor, I think you brought a few friends with you today. I know everybody here has heard about a door-to-door salesman. But have you ever heard about a door-to-door apartment-to-apartment ministry? Pastor Sonny and his wife started in Aliso Village back in the 60s. This church has been in existence for going on 53 years. They went apartment-to-apartment ministering individuals that needed help. That door-to-door apartment apartment grew to churches, not just throughout the United States of America, but in 33 other countries in the world. Mr. Sadio, Mr. Price and I, not that long ago, had the opportunity, Pastor Sonny, to go to one of the Victory Outreach churches here downtown. And I think the three of us would agree that that was the one church that we went to where we were loved unconditionally. We were there with actor Danny Trejo, who did not start off on the right path, but shows that salvation is possible for us all. You know, there's a saying that if you can help one person along the way, then your life has not been in vain. Pastor Sonny has helped thousands and thousands and thousands. They house over 10,000 people every day, every night in their recovery ministries. I could go on and on and on about this great man, who is an author, has written four or five books, all about helping people. This man never gives up on anyone. Ladies and gentlemen, it is my pleasure to present to you the founder of Victory Outreach International, Pastor Sonny. Give him a round of applause.
I want to thank you for honoring us today, my wife and also myself, but also Victory Outreach. And we have a representation of a Victory Outreach gang here today. All these people that are here today are miracles, just like I am a miracle standing here this morning as well. Like our brother said, originally I come from New York City. And I was a heroin addict in the streets of New York, in and out of most of the prisons in New York City. And one day, there was an ex-gang leader by the name of Nikki Cruz, whose life was changed. And he told me that the very same way that he changed, that also God was able to change my life. And that was over 50-something years ago, where actually 1962, where God touched me and changed my life. And then I came out here to California to study, to go to Bible school. And when I came out here, I noticed that there was a big drug problem, also a gang problem. And I said, well, if they did it for me, God did it for me, he could do it for them. And that's when we started in 1967. We started the ministry of Victory Outreach. In fact, our whole church was known as the Junkie Church when we started out, very unique church. And they called me the Junkie Priest or the Junkie Pastor. But since then, God has done some great things. Now, like General said, we're all over the world, all over the world. And the people that are out there taking the message are also ex-drug addicts and gang members that God has delivered. And they're out there all over the world, taking the message that they could change and that God is able to change their lives. So this morning, I want to thank you for this great honor that you're giving, not only to me, but also to the people that are sitting behind me, Victory Outreach, and especially my wife, who's been very faithful. We've been married now, I hope I don't forget, over 53 years, right? 53 years, I got it right. So once again, thank you, thank you so very, very much.
Mr. Wesson, we have a member on the queue.
Okay.
Can I do that right? Mr. Sadio?
Thank you. Sonny, just let me say publicly what I said privately, and I want to say thank you. We work with Pastor Augie in our district, making sure we house those who might be homeless, making sure that we provide opportunities for those who are in need. It's a great partnership and we can't thank you enough. But as I said privately to you, my family thanks you. Because in the mid-'70s, we were visited by my uncle, who had come up from Tijuana, and he had a heroin problem, as I shared with you. And my dad was obviously struggling with what we could do. At that time, we were working with Pastor Gamboa at the Good Shepherd, and we went to you and went to Victory Outreach. And with your leadership and your grace, we were able to find a location for my uncle to go through rehabilitation. And those are the miracles that God gives us, to see someone addicted to heroin, to then take that time to be relocated up in Victorville, and then to overcome the challenges of heroin, to return, to become a stable father, to raise his family, to become a man of dignity and respect. We thank you for that. My family thanks you for that. And we are always indebted to you. And thank you so much for being the incredible representative and grace of God that you are. God bless you.
And I see, if we could bring Councilman Galvan Isaacs. Ladies and gentlemen, this is our colleague from the great city of Compton, Isaac Galvan, who helped me put this together. If we could give him a round of applause from the great city of Compton. And on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, we'd like to thank you, Pastor Sonny, for all of your work and your continued work. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give Pastor Sonny another round of applause and a big shout out to Victory Outreach.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, let's go in the back. If you could get some of your group, come in the back.
Members, I'd like to recognize former Councilmember Tom Labange, that's here this morning. Welcome, Mr. Labange. I love you, Mr. Labange. Thank you for being here. Mr. Rue, are you ready for your presentation, sir? And Councilmember Lee is also joining on this presentation as well.
Good morning, colleagues. And 안녕하세요. I am so thrilled to be here with Council General Won Jung Kim, Chairman Byung Man Lee of the Korean American Foundation, and my Korean American colleague, Councilmember John Lee. And we are here together in friendship and honor to celebrate Korean American Day. And what a great Korean American Day it is this year, with the news yesterday that Parasite has become the first Korean film to be nominated for an Oscar. And anyone who knows Korean cinema will tell you that it's about time. Today, we are celebrating our community, our culture, and how far we've come. And here in Los Angeles, we are the heart of the Korean American story. Los Angeles is home to more people of Korean descent than anywhere outside of Korea. And Korean Americans have launched businesses, built communities, and greatly influenced the culture and success of our city. What started out as a small group of brave settlers over 100 years ago has grown to more than 350,000 Korean Americans in Los Angeles County alone. But our community story and my personal story would not have been possible without the nonprofits and community groups of Koreatown and beyond. Like so many other communities in our city and county, the Korean American community is one that looks out for one another. And whether it's the Korean American Foundation, KYCC, Korean American Federation, Los Angeles, or so many others, our individual success stands on the shoulders of those who came before us and paved the way. That is why I'm so honored to share this event with the Korean American Foundation of Los Angeles, the Council General, Councilmember Lee, and many other churches, nonprofits, and community centers that lead our Korean American community. Today, Korean culture and influence in America is being recognized more and more. Following Sandra Oh, who last year became the first woman of Korean descent to win an Emmy for lead actress in a TV series, to Parasite winning the best foreign film at Emmys this year, from K-pop to Korean barbecue, the vibrant Korean culture is making itself known across the globe. And here, where Koreans have settled for more than, for over 100 years, Korean Americans are finally receiving the recognition that they deserve, not as newcomers, but as an integral part of the American story. With that, I'd like to introduce my colleague, Councilmember John Lee.
The United States and Korea have long shared a long positive relationship since establishing diplomatic ties in 1882. In fact, if it wasn't for that relationship and the US's support of South Korea during the Korean War, my parents probably would never have had the opportunity to come here. Both of my parents made the hard decision to leave their families in their homeland to find opportunity and hope for a better life here in the United States. But that path to a new life was not an easy one. The history of Korean Americans in this country is one of remarkable fortitude and determination. Today, as we celebrate 117 years since Koreans first immigrated to the United States, I'd like to talk a little bit about what that last century has looked like so we can better appreciate all the achievements that my colleague, Councilmember Rue, has just shared with us. History marks the first significant migration of Korean Americans in 1903, when Koreans arrived in Hawaii to work on pineapple and sugar plantations. This story rings true of the narrative we tell our children about how America is truly the land of opportunity. What we failed to mention is that when the United States annexed Hawaii in 1898, Chinese laborers could no longer be recruited due to the Chinese Exclusion Act of 1882. So they turned to Japan and Korea for laborers. However, increasing tensions with Japan at the turn of the 20th century led to the elimination of new Japanese immigration to the US. So America turned to Korea to continue to meet the nation's growing demand for labor. But that recruitment was short-lived. No sooner had this established diplomatic relations with Korea and opened its doors to their people than it closed them by enacting several laws to halt the general immigration from Korea and other Asian countries, with the exception of the Philippines, which was an American colony. In the 1940s, America's doors to Korea and other Asian nations started to reopen, and a new law allowed about 100 immigrants per year from each of these countries. This quota stayed in place until 1952, when the 100% cap was replaced with a total cap of 2,000 people for all Asian immigrants. 1952 is also when Korean immigrants were finally allowed to naturalize and become US citizens. But it wasn't until 1965 that our country's quota system was finally abolished. Interestingly, it was about this time that America recognized its need for more skilled professionals and began heavily recruiting such professionals from Asian countries, including Korea. My parents came to America before 1965. My father to attend college in Kentucky. My mother, having already completed college in Korea, she arrived under the quota system. Upon their arrival, they encountered tremendous discrimination and injustice, which is why they instilled in me the importance of civic engagement and public service. Even after quotas were finally eliminated in 1965, Korean immigrants still faced discriminatory laws and practices, and of course, threats of violence and other attempts to keep them on the fringes of American society. But today, we are no longer on the fringes. Korean Americans, especially here in Los Angeles, have moved from a position of vulnerability to one of empowerment and engagement, contributing to the rich diversity of our city, our state, and our nation. Today, as we celebrate Korean American Day, I am proud to stand before you on behalf of a people who have endured tremendous adversity and yet emerged with strength and determination. And I am proud to be one of the two Americans on the city council to represent the city of Los Angeles. And I am proud to live during a time when Korean culture is permeating and influencing all aspects of society, from the performing arts to the culinary arts. And I look forward to the days when history and literature will abound with stories of Korean Americans and their continued contributions of creativity, innovation, and service. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Byung Lee, Chair of the Korean American Foundation.
Hello, everyone. Thank you very much. This is my fifth year of Korean American Day proclamation. New City Council John Lee, he explained about our immigration story. So I just want to announce a couple things and go next person. I appreciate LA City and LA City Council doing our Korean American Proclamation Day, especially David Yu and Hope Watson, eight years doing Korean American Proclamation for leading for us. I appreciate it so much, Hope. Oh, he's not here? And we've been grow. So David Yu, Johnny, explain to everything about our story. So we've been grow. Last Sunday, we had tremendous event. We've been together, all the multi-ethnic Venezuelans, Bangladesh, and China, Chinese, and some Philippines. We've been gathering together and we had a big thanks service together. And from Korea, about 30 performance camp, we had a big event. And I invite him here today, but he don't have, it looks like he don't have a chance to hide to everyone here. So we've been grow up like this. And next year, I wish I could invite all the 13 city council in our event. We had a dinner celebration, finally, Millennium Bell Tmall Hotel, 200 multi-ethnic and Korean leaders. And we've been celebrating. And we've been celebrate. We've been appreciate to LA City County, LA City, everyone to let us grow up. Thank you, Herb Watson, especially eight years helping us. I appreciate it. And welcome Nuri Martinez as new president. So I hope I see you next year again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman Lee. Thank you, Chairman Lee. It is now my great honor to introduce the Consul General from the Republic of Korea, Won Jung Kim.
Newly elected Council President Nuri Martinez and former President Honorable Herb Watson and honorable Council members and leaders in Korean American community. This morning, I'm indeed honored and privileged to stand at this prestigious chamber celebrating Korean American Day. 117 years ago, the first round of Korean American immigrant came to America, and many of them made California a home. And since then, California has been continuously enriched by the Korean Americans, and they has become an integral part of our great Californian history. So for that, on behalf of Korean government and the Consul General based here in Los Angeles, I'd like to express my deepest gratitude to all the Council members and all the Californians who shoulders great friendship and support. 감사합니다.
Thank you.
Mr. Rue, I have Mr. Western on the queue, sir. Go ahead.
Yeah, just for a minute. I just want to say that I don't have the words to thank you for all of the work that you have done to help make this city the greatest city in the country. So I'll just use one of the few Korean phrases that I know, and I'll say to each and every one of you, 태단히 감사합니다.
Back to you, Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Madam President. And with that, Councilmember John Lee and myself, on behalf of this Los Angeles City Council, would like to present this resolution announcing Korean American Day in all of Los Angeles City to the Korean American community. Thank you so very much, and thank you, colleagues.
Members, I'd like to recognize my good friend, California Secretary of State Alex Padilla, who's here with us this morning. Thank you, my friend. He also happens to be a San Fernando High School alumni and a former Council President. So welcome to Council chambers. I also want to recognize another high school friend and San Fernando High School alumni, Assemblywoman Lou Rivas, who's here this morning. Thank you for being here. Members, before we continue along with our agenda, I'd like to say a few words and address the Council. So I ask you for your patience as I begin. Just waiting on two other council members to come back from our photo op in the back. Sorry about that. Colleagues, thank you. It's an honor to stand here before all of you as your Council President and the first Latina elected to the Council Presidency in 170 years of US government. I also want to thank former Council President Herb Watson for his excellent stewardship and leading these Council chambers for the past eight years. It's been a, it's been an honor. It has been an honor to serve along him as part of his leadership team. And I want to thank him for giving me and allowing me to be able to serve as your Council President. So thank you, my friend, Mr. Western. Thank you, colleagues, for entrusting in me and electing me as your Council President. I also want to congratulate our President Pro Tem, Mr. Joe Buscaino. Thank you, sir. And our new Assistant Pro Tem, Mr. David Rue. Each of you have been incredible to work with. And I know we represent very different districts, but I look forward to serving with you along this leadership team. Councilmember Western, I'm very proud of the fact that we've been able to lead here in the city of Los Angeles on this Council chamber. We've been able to have major victories that we should all be very proud of. But clearly, as we stand here today on January 14, as this new decade begins, we face tremendous challenges here in our city. Challenges that demand us to lead and demand us to lead with a sense of urgency. I feel very strongly about the sense of urgency that is, that we're being called upon because of my personal history. A lot of you have taken different journeys to get here as elected officials. But for me, I think it's through the grace of God that I stand here before you. And I want to begin to talk about what I envision us working on as we lead forward. But more importantly, I want to be able to translate what my leadership style would look like leading this Council forward. When I grew up, girls that looked like me and talked like me did not dream of ever having positions like this. I am 100% a product of my upbringing and my environment. I was raised in Pacoima in the northeast San Fernando Valley. And my parents were immigrants from the state of Zacatecas. And I'm a proud daughter of a dishwasher and a factory worker. My father never drove a day in his life and would take two buses to get to work every day. He wake up at four o'clock in the morning to catch the five o'clock bus on Van Nuys Boulevard to make his way to Sherman Oaks, six days out of the week. I remember vividly the stresses and the stress that my parents would talk about in terms of not having enough money for our mortgage. I remember being in our bedroom with my sister and hearing my mother cry every time she had to lose her job. I remember the conversations and the anxiety that took over our household as a result of knowing that my parents were basically making ends meet and did not know whether they were going to be able to make the mortgage payment the next month. I remember my mother making, out of $3, making a huge meal for us because she was able to stretch a dollar every time she had it in her hand. The daily struggles permeated around my house and every aspect of our lives. You see, when you grow up poor, you realize at a very young age that you have a sense of responsibility to be able to help your household. I internalize that. The anxiety that I remember waking up to every single morning and walking to school every single morning and seeing the stress in my parents' eyes every time they came home from work. As an English learner, I had to quickly figure out how to translate adult conversations for my parents who didn't speak English. I am a child of the working poor. And this is why I champion issues of the working poor. And my main priority is to create a family's first agenda for every single child and family in our city. Our family's first agenda is about creating a sense of urgency for everyone who lives in our city, to ensure that we have a call to action to help every single little boy and little girl in our city to ensure that we are, they're reaching their full potential and that we're servicing them as a city. They are our future. Our children depend on us, and their future is in jeopardy. Many of our children are falling through the cracks by no fault of their own. These kids and their families are struggling every single day to make ends meet, increasing their anxiety at school because their parents simply cannot afford a brand-new house or are basically making ends meet to be able to keep a roof under their head. These families are one emergency away from catastrophe. These families are doing everything humanly possible to stay in their homes. They're one catastrophe away from losing it all. Whether it's a death in their family, a loss of a job, an illness, a broken arm, or sometimes a fire on our hillsides that prevents them from getting to work every day. They're doing everything right. And their children are growing up in this environment. And I know that because I grew up with it and I experienced it firsthand. I was very fortunate that my mother, who is here today, Julia Martinez, who is my shero, she is my everything. And I know she misses my dad as much as I do, but I know he's watching me today. But if it wasn't for this courageous woman applying at a factory job across the street from where we grew up at a company called Price Fister, where she would walk across the street every single day into the Human Resources office to fill out an application to be able to work there. Not because it was luxurious, but because it paid $15 an hour back in the 70s and 80s. Because people were actually able to buy homes in the San Fernando Valley with a manufacturing job. My mother worked there and was a proud teamster. She was a proud teamster, and she had a pension. And she, for the very first time, was able to obtain healthcare benefits for me, my sister, and my dad. And my father, who I often talk about as being the very first male feminist in our family and the first male feminist I've ever met, my father was so proud that his wife was able to get and secure a job for me, for us and our family. Price Fister eventually closed its doors, and hundreds of thousands of workers were laid off. But it was just enough to get us by and to ensure that we had enough to pay for our mortgage and make sure that my family did not spiral out of control. I know, members, each and every one of you is empathetic and feel the same frustrations to try to help as many people as we can. This is why we supported increasing the minimum wage to $15 an hour and why last month we committed to ensuring that we protect tenants by ensuring that we enacted the Emergency Relief Fund to ensure that people were not thrown out on the streets during the holidays. We did all that, and we did that together. A two-bedroom apartment in Los Angeles is $2,500 a month. $2,500 a month is the average rent in Los Angeles. It's no wonder why people are living in our city and why people are living in motels on our sidewalks and in their cars. Right before the winter break, my daughter Isabel, who's here this morning, shared with me, Izzy, stand up. My 10-year-old daughter. My 10-year-old daughter shared with me a story right before we went on Christmas break. We were having dinner, and my daughter Isabel shared with me that her friend, that her best friend at her vintage elementary school where they both go to, that her father had had an accident and had broken his two arms. And I said, "Is he going to be okay?" And she said, "I'm worried about my friend because my friend told me today that her dad was not going to be able to work because he's broken his two hands." But to add to the anxiety of this poor little 10-year-old girl, she was worried that her father was going to lose his job and that they weren't going to be able to cover the healthcare payments to be able to make sure he had his surgeries that he needed to repair his arms. These are the conversations that our children are having on their playgrounds at school every single day. Children who are 10 years old, who shouldn't have to think about how their parents are going to be able to make ends meet and pay their rent every month. Children like this little girl, who I happen to know, who is brilliant. That I bet you that this little girl is going to either be an astronaut, a surgeon, or an attorney. She's an incredible, incredible writer. But this little girl is worried about her family ending up homeless. And my daughter asked me that night, "Is my friend going to be okay? Is my friend going to end up on the sidewalks?" And members, as much as I held back my tears and my heartbreak for this family, I could not reassure my 10-year-old daughter that her best friend was going to be okay. The working people of this city are doing everything they can to ensure that they keep a roof under their heads. But it's still not enough. Our children are living with parents who can't guarantee whether they're going to be able to have a home next month. As public servants, we have an obligation and a purpose to help them. Our family-first agenda has to start with ensuring that a Homelessness and Poverty Committee, our Homeless Coordinator, LA County, and LASSA are tracking, are tracking and housing families as a top priority. That's our call to action to ensure we know what is happening to these families, where they're at, and house them as soon as possible. There are so many different ways to define a family. And I am proud to say that on this City Council, we embrace all families, including all people, no matter their color, their religious, their non-beliefs, no matter who they love, they're all part of the same family, no matter where they come from. We need to make sure that we make affordable housing available to them as soon as possible, and we need to protect that affordable housing that is so precious for so many of our families. For the sake of my daughter's best friend and for all the children in the city, we've got to enact a family's first agenda and execute it with a sense of courage, leadership, and a call to action. Each and every one of you represents different communities, but we all have to be in this together. But it starts with addressing homelessness. I recognize that so much has already happened, and we have led in so many different ways by enacting the Homeless Strategy in 2016 and by putting more than $1.2 billion worth of housing bonds to be able to build housing. I want to thank in particular Mr. Western, Mr. Harris Dawson, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Bonin, Mr. Ofer, for your leadership on homelessness. This city, like no other in this country, is building more homeless housing than ever before. And last week, we opened the very first HHH Affordable Housing Unit. We're doing it, and it's still not enough. We need to lead and push forward with programs that actually work. And we need to have the courage to admit when they're not and make changes. We have to have a brutal conversation with ourselves and make an assessment of what actually is working and what is not. The Los Angeles Homeless Service Authority, does that model actually work for us? Do we need to rework that? Or do we need to be thinking of something different? Today, I'm introducing two motions towards that goal. The Homeless Strategy was enacted in 2016, and since then, we have learned a lot. And I believe it's time to reassess that strategy. The second motion that I want to, that I'm introducing this morning is to reevaluate our role with LASSA and how that governing structure is working. We need to have an honest conversation. We need to have an honest conversation with ourselves, with our partners across the street at the Board of Supervisors, to make sure that the services that they're providing are actually working for our residents here in the city of Los Angeles. We make up more than 61% of the entire county's homeless population and are receiving our fair share in terms of services. We also need to work with our partners across the street to ensure that mental health and drug rehabilitation services are actually working and producing results on our streets. Another starting point is to make sure that we are not losing and we're making sure that we're keeping people in their housing, that people are not being turned onto the streets. UCLA, a couple of weeks ago, published a story about a model that is going to dramatically improve the odds of identifying who is actually going to become homeless and what we can do, partnered with the county, to enact policies to keep the very vulnerable populations in their homes. There's plenty of programs that I talked about in terms of helping our homeless population, but there aren't enough programs that are actually going to help people stay in their homes. The Renters Relief Program that we launched last month is a start and actually giving people the right to counsel to ensure that they have every protection when they're fighting an eviction. And I want to applaud Mr. Corretz for your leadership on that, sir. We're leading and making sure that people who have housing stay in their homes. So many of our families don't have disposable income, and so many of our families don't depend on our savings account. They basically live paycheck-to-paycheck, day-to-day, hour-to-hour. So today, I'm introducing a third motion to launch a pilot program that would create a revolving loan program to help working families pay for their necessities every time they cannot make ends meet. We have to ensure that our families stay in their homes, are able to pay for their bills, and don't turn out to live in a motel or on a sidewalk. And next, members, we have to address homeless women. A third of our homeless population are women who are either facing physical assault or have already been assaulted sexually or physically on our streets, and we have to do better than that. Not only as a woman, but as people. We need to ensure that women are protected. It's an absolute travesty what's happening to women, and we need to change that. These women are our mothers, our granddaughters, and we need to ensure that they feel protected in a safe place to live. To our foster youth, we need to ensure that this family-first agenda addresses every single one of our young people. They have no families. We are their families. Our youth are expected to be able to turn their lives around and live on their own by the time they're 23 years old. Our foster youth has no option. They face a higher percentage of homelessness as adults if we don't address them. Our LGBTQ youth, who are shunned sometimes by their own family members, also have a high percentage of homelessness if we don't assist them. So I'm introducing a fourth motion today to explore ways of addressing our foster youth and their prospects of being able to get a job in our city. I want to work with our businesses to be able to work on additional preferences, perhaps a tax break, to ensure that they're working with us to be able to employ more foster youth. We absolutely have to do everything in our power to ensure that these young people have the resources to not end up on the streets. And we can no longer accept the fact that we continue to lose board and care facilities that are giving a dignified way of living for people who are dealing with mental health issues. The state government has to and must reevaluate our board and care services and make sure that we resubsidize these homes that are paying for so many of our loved ones to stay. Thirty-five dollars per resident is what we're currently paying, is what allotted by the state. It's not enough to keep these places open. We're losing board and care units. Almost a thousand units have been lost over the last three years due to the real estate market. We need to ensure that we continue to protect these units, most of which are providing services for our low-income and otherwise homeless individuals. And we need to turn to the federal government to ensure that they're doing their fair share. They have a role and a responsibility to help us. On the other side of homelessness is also this need to clean our streets. It is a tough conversation to have. All you need to do is look around. Anywhere you drive in our city, you will see our sidewalks full of trash and unfortunately, of bodies that we have not been able to house. In my district, I'm really proud to say that we lead in terms of homeless-supported housing and services for our homeless individuals. We have met our 227 commitments before the deadline of July of 2020 of this year. And I want to also commend those of you who have stepped up and are leading in this effort. Councilmember Cedillo, Councilmember Harris-Dawson, Councilmember Price, Councilmember Wesson, all of you, Mr. Ofero, Mr. Bonin, and Mr. Buscayino, all of you have met the challenge and have met your commitment of our 222 commitment that we made several years ago. And I also know that Councilmember Kocorian and Mr. Rue and Mr. Rodriguez, you are very close to meeting your goal as well. But I am also very proud of the fact that Mr. Blumenfield and Mr. Corretz and Mr. Lee are making tremendous progress in this effort, and we need to do more, and we need to support you. Everywhere you look, people feel the anger, the frustration. And we owe it to our neighbors to ensure that we create a balanced approach of how we clean up and find housing for homeless individuals, and we have to do that together. We need to ensure that decency and compassion is something that we lead with when making sure these cleanups are taking place. But we also have to restore order in our streets. Sometimes, as much as we get criticized in the public, I know each and every one of you is trying to do its fair share to ensure that these cleanups are done with dignity and that we provide services for those who wish to accept them. While homelessness exists in every part of our city, the services are disproportionately located in poorer neighborhoods. Because for decades, government always found it so much easier to put the burden on communities of color, Black and Brown communities, who are doing their fair share. So historically, these frontline communities, just like I talk about environmental justice, it is the reason why this first family's first action that I'm taking here today needs to also include our Green New Deal. And it starts with frontline communities. Communities that for decades, Black and Brown communities for decades have been dealing with issues of climate change, bad air, and lead exposure in our own communities. And council, I want to make it very clear. In this city council, we will prioritize frontline communities, Black and Brown communities, as part of our Green New Deal. The battle of climate change is nothing new to us. We've been dealing with it for decades. It's about time we start addressing our own concerns in our own backyards. Just like these four kids that I keep talking about, in terms of their anxiety and living in poverty, we need to ensure that these kids have a safe way to walk to school every single day and have a clean community they can call their own. I represent people who have never said no to a homeless project or homeless services. Our communities step up every single time. We have two responsibilities. We've got to house our homeless population and do it in a fair and equitable way. And we need to ensure that our streets are clean, safe, and accessible for everyone. And this takes leadership, it takes courage, and a sense of urgency for a family-first agenda. A family-first agenda also addresses women's rights. Women don't only give birth to babies. We shape humanity. We raise the Albert Einsteins, the Dolores Huertas, the Martin Luther Kings, and the Ruth Bader Gangages of the world. But we often become chore-changed in opportunities. There is two females on this LA City Council, my sister Monica Rodriguez and I. And we need to ensure that women are being valued and that they're being given the opportunity to lead. How we get paid, income inequality, women of color and LGBT women in particular, we need to ensure that they're represented in every single department, whether it's a general manager or an entry-level position, women need to be represented. Out of the 42 departments, in our bureaus, 23 of them have 50% or more women, which is great. And over the past several years, working with LAPD and the Fire Department, we're diversifying this workforce. But, members, I will be asking in the next several weeks to work with the street services, street lighting, and general services to figure out a way to recruit more women into these departments. Every single one of us have an obligation to ensure women are being given an opportunity to lead. This is why I'm introducing a fifth motion today, requesting departments to create an internship program similar to my girls' fire camp to expose low-income youth to these jobs. And we need to also ensure that families, men and women, have access to paid parental leave. This archaic practice of believing or thinking that men are the only ones that go out to work every single day is 50 years old. We've got to change the way we treat families. We have to change the way we treat their workforce. Women, women should not be punished for having children. Women should be celebrated for re-entering the workplace and becoming role models for their kids. All parents, whether you're a woman or a man, gay or straight, deserve the time to bond with their kids. And any woman giving birth deserves the time to physically and mentally be prepared to come to work. I talked about my own experience of suffering from postpartum depression after I had my daughter Isabel. I talk about the heart-wrenching and agony that I felt when I couldn't figure out how to bond with her. But I got to say, Isabel is the light of my eyes, and she is the most important thing in my life, baby. And if it wasn't for my husband... And we all deserve to be able to spend time with our kids. I want to also thank a few key men who have actually worked and are huge advocates of paid parental leave, and that's Mr. Kocorian and Mr. David Rue. I look forward to continuing to work with you to ensure that all families have the ability to stay home with their children. And a family-first agenda cannot be complete without a discussion about the budget. A budget is where policies become reality. A family-first agenda also requires a family-first budget. And that is true in good times and in bad times. And we're going to probably, in the coming years, have a little bit of both, and we have to be prepared for that. But we will not balance this budget on the backs of the working poor. Around the hard-working people, the men and women of labor who fuel our dwindling middle class, we have to build up the middle class, not tear it down. And Mr. Kocorian, I look forward to working with you, sir, and all your expertise to guide us through this process. Our family-first agenda also requires accountability. We need to ensure that our departments and our general managers are held accountable. You help us run our parks. You help us repair and redesign our streets and our sidewalks. And you execute affordable housing policies. We need to ensure that we're working alongside you, that you're keeping us informed about the policies that we pass here as a council. Each and every one of you chairpersons have a huge obligation, and you're dealing with a lot in your own committees. You need to be reassured that the policies that we enact on this council are actually being implemented. In the next couple of weeks, I will be setting up quarterly meetings so that we can have meetings with the chairperson of that committee and the department that reports directly to you, that general manager, to ensure that your priorities and this council's priorities are actually being met. We often find ourselves, a year from now, two years from now, having passed policy that has not been enacted. We deserve a response in real time about our priorities, our goals, how we're going to achieve them. And if something isn't working, how we're going to ensure that we tweak it and fix it, that we can actually show results to our constituents. And members, you all need to be supported as well. You need to be taken seriously in committees, and you need to ensure that people are being held accountable for the policies that you pass in committees and the programs that you wanted to see go into effect. In conclusion, members, this is just part of what I believe we should be doing and things that we should be focused on. We are the role models for our children, and we are the role models for our families. I am honored to be the first Latina elected to be council president, but I cannot be the last. So let us work to ensure that soon we will welcome the first Native American woman council president, the first African-American woman council president, and the first Asian-American council president. Women of all backgrounds should have the ability and the opportunity to stand here, behind this desk, or in any other position of power in our city government. And to all the little girls that are listening today, especially the little girls in Pacoima and Panorama City and Boyle Heights and Watts and Westlake, this city council is going to do everything we can to ensure that nothing stands between you and your dreams. Please don't lose hope. Dream every dream worth dreaming and fight every fight worth fighting. Live the life that you choose, because you too will be next. Thank you, members. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And with that said, Mr. President Protam, I would like to offer you an opportunity to say a few words to our colleagues and to members here that are here with us this morning.
Well, let's hear it for Madam President, ladies and gentlemen, Nuri Martinez, who has inspired this city and been so blessed, members, to be elected to serve as your President Protam. Thank you for giving me this honor. And, Nuri, talking about dropping the mic, you have given us a tall order to move on restoring and improving the quality of life with your family's first agenda, and I'm so blessed to serve alongside you. Members, as we all know collectively, council members are often the loudest champions of Los Angeles. And while we have lots to boast about, we can't be overly proud at a time when so many people are suffering in our city. We must use our pride and our power to become a city where everyone has a safe place to call home. And we must become a city where those who do work full-time can afford to pay their rent. We also must ensure that those in need of mental health and drug diversion have access to it. And we must protect the vulnerable people from predators. Colleagues, Madam President, we must serve and protect. We must serve and protect. And as an LAPD officer, I saw the inhumane choices poverty thrusts upon people. I have seen a mother have to make a choice between staying in an abusive relationship or sleeping in her car with her daughter alongside her. That is not a choice. That's a punishment. I saw gangs pimping teenage girls, where, you know, when Nuri talks about human trafficking, she's specifically talking about gangs pimping teenage girls. And last week, I met with Laverne Green at my new bridge home in Watts. Ms. Green was a nurse for 40 years before a divorce, followed by a bakery who drove her into homelessness. The 62-year-old woman lived in her Cadillac for a year before moving to the bridge home, sheltered less than two months ago. home sheltered less than two months ago. Living in a car after forty years of caring for others is not right. Just this morning, I witnessed my daughter Gia packing lunch, and I did witness she packed an extra granola bar. I go, "Gia, why do you have two granola bars?" "For Diego, Dad, he comes up to me at lunchtime." Yesterday, my son was at Office Depot buying school supplies when one of our local homeless women that we see along Western Avenue passed alongside him in the middle aisle. He says, "Dad," she smelled like, reek like urine, and she can barely care for herself. And I told him, "Son, we can't force her to go to the hospital. We have a system to fix, colleagues." The bottom line is that people are making inhumane choices because those are the only options on the menu. Poverty is affecting too many people on too many levels in our city. While we have some of the lowest unemployment numbers in history, we have the highest rates of poverty that we've ever experienced in our lives. The great economy is not too great for too many people. And when we speak about economic development, and we must include all Angelenos, we must focus on innovation as a driver of our economy. We must use technology, as you often heard me say, we must use technology to create jobs, not kill jobs. So, members, Madam President, we have this opportunity to drive local policies that will serve as national standards to support cities and communities around this country. And as Nuri knows this, today, I'm with her. I'm so proud to serve alongside you, Madam President, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to serve as your President Protem. We got a lot of work ahead of us, and just to let you know, I love you, I care deeply about you, and this is a family environment, and I know that we got a lot of work ahead of us. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Buzcaino. Mr. Rue, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Madam President, and colleagues. It is an honor and a privilege to serve as Assistant Council President Protempore. When I was growing up, an immigrant kid in a working-class family, it was hard to understand why my parents brought me here, why they sacrificed everything, juggled multiple jobs just to keep food on the table and ensure my siblings and I had a good education. But standing before you here today, as the first Asian-American to serve on city council leadership, appointed by the first Latina council president, I now understand why. Only in a country like America, and in a city like Los Angeles, would this be possible. And I know that I owe this moment to those who came before us, and those who sacrificed everything for an individual like myself to have this chance. This is a historic moment, and I could not be more proud to serve under the council leadership of Council President Nuri Martinez. She is our first Latina council president. A champion for families, for vulnerable communities who need help, and for a Los Angeles that sees and lifts up all people. I know that under her leadership and under Council President Protem, Joe Buzcaino, we will be a council that leads with courage and compassion, that works to tackle the big problems facing our city head-on, and reflect the true diversity of Los Angeles. I am very humbled today, and I am very grateful to be working with each and every single one of you and for the people of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. I just want to acknowledge the young people that are in the back from Panorama High School. Thank you for being here. And welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. Members, let's turn back to our agenda, we're gonna go through multiple speaker cards. Lynn Moses, are you here? Mr. Moses? Good morning, Mr. Moses. You're speaking on items twenty-seven and twenty-eight, and then your general public comment. Go ahead.
Good morning, thank you. Sir, officer?
Sergeant, there's paperwork that Mr. Moses would like to turn in. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy New Year to all my Angelino brothers and sisters, that's everybody. Item twenty-seven, yeah. At last I was here on twelve-eleven nineteen, I witnessed the last official act of City Council President Herb Wesson was to throw Ms. Autry, a ninety-eight-pound black woman, out of the chamber and into the street, just so he could stand there and praise himself for the next two hours. Disgraceful, and all of you council people are involved in it, was disgraceful act.
So, could we move on to item twenty-seven?
Mr. Moses, you need to talk about the two items, twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
I demand to be thrown out of this chamber, it would be a badge of honor, and I mean right now. You will not disrespect my people, you will, I demand it. I honor my family, I honor my people.
If you want to talk about this in your general public comment, feel free, but for the now, go on to twenty-seven or twenty-eight.
Let's go ahead and give him his general public comment.
You, Ms. Martinez, mocked her as she left. Don't ever disrespect another person of my race again.
Mr. Moses, are you gonna want your general public comments?
I demand to be thrown out of here as honor my people, honor my family. Right now, it's disgraceful. Herb Wesson, his last act...
So, we're gonna construe this as your general public comment, you got thirty-seven seconds.
His last, his last act as City Council President was to throw out a little black woman. What is the meaning of dissent? Is this, is this democracy? Somebody dissents, you throw them out in the street and let him go on talking about himself for two hours? It's disgraceful. That's not a man, he's a failure. He's a failure and a disgrace. He's nothing. I love all people. Sleazy Marqueezie Dawson throwing the Afiba Center out, throwing the Dorset Village...
Thank you, Mr. Moses, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir, your time is up, thank you. Next speaker is Eric Previn, followed by Arnold Sacks. Mr. Previn, you're speaking on item twenty-seven and twenty-eight in your general public comment.
Well, thank you. It's Eric Previn, and congratulations on your installation as the backup Wesson. We appreciate it. And it is historic, and you're to be afforded all of the rights and privileges under the law, just like Wesson was. And I know that he's trying to...
So, why don't we move on to item twenty-seven and twenty-eight, Mr. Previn?
I think it's appropriate that I just say one word about her...
You can say all of that in general public comment. For now, move on to item twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Thank you.
Well, I was cut short on Christmas Eve, but I'll go on to twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Fine. Twenty-seven and twenty-eight are the two items which we've portioned. Today, AVAC has agreed to allow us to speak on twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Twenty-eight is interesting, actually, because, you know, today we saw David Rue dancing around and making a speech. We saw Mr. Harris Dawson is from CD-8. This is a CD-8 naming item. So, naming, what naming is, is where we find an intersection, or a park, or a bench, sometimes like with Wesson World, a giant athletic center, and we affix the name of the local official. Mike Bonin has a great building in his area where he shares kind of billing, if you will, with Sheila Kuehl. So, he's kind of up here, she's right down there, and their names are right atop the building, and everybody sees it night, day, all year long. Forget about election, not election. Forget about Freyman Canyon, where you can see Sheila Kuehl prominently on display next to Berman, who unfortunately got replaced by Sherman. So, we've got a little confusion there, because everyone's wondering, why is this guy still sticked up there? And it's because he fought to have the naming happen, so we appreciate it. So, thank you for naming Campbell Square Campbell Lock. We do appreciate it. Now, the next item is obviously CD-1. Here, you've got Gil Sadio, who's been doing an outstanding job. He has arranged for some showers and potties at a fire station. I don't think there's anything, I mean, there's a million things to criticize Sadio about, but this is certainly not one of them, sir. I appreciate your doing it, and I appreciate you leaning in the direction of what... He stepped off, good choice. Kocorian has failed, and Councilmember Martinez is the new president and leader. I would ask you to fine Kocorian, and general public comment?
You have your general public comment, sir.
I want to thank Alex Padilla, the Secretary of State, for coming down today, because we've been limiting our focus on Dean Logan and obviously Holly Walcott's malfeasance in the electoral process. I know you saw the LA Times article about how this year thirty-five percent of candidates in the city of LA, unlike five percent, or zero percent, or one percent in the previous elections, failed to make the ballot. Even Eric Previn failed to officially make the ballot. But, the good news is, and the people don't need to worry, we are challenging it. And we're challenging it because Judicial Watch, a weird group, filed a lawsuit, and 1.5 million voters were stricken from the voter rolls. Not only that, but the DMV complications have been enormous for people who've registered. There were members of my community who are clearly eligible and registered and ready to go, and they were thrown out by Holly Walcott's pack of malfeasant challengers. They don't even do validation over there, they do challenging. Now, Fable gets credit for showing up as a municipal corporation lawyer at the hearing on Christmas Eve, but it's gonna backfire, because that was a big mistake, because you represent this group, as we can see.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Next speaker is Arnold Sacks. Mr. Sacks, are you here? Arnold Sacks? Does he appear to be in the room? How about Wayne Spindler and Mr. Herman? You want to come on up, Mr. Spindler? You're speaking on items twenty-seven and twenty-eight in your general public comment, followed by Armando Herman.
It's very good, and thank you, Mommy, for becoming our new president. To number twenty-seven, we have the Gamecock Campbell Prec Square, Marqueezie Harris dildo Dawson renaming streets. Now, when they used to go down to Stalker and Crenshaw to buy crack, for many of you here in the room, it was very chweep. But now, Campbell Cock, Campbell Square, it'll be more difficult to buy more of my drugs because there's too many quacks. And me and Mr. Seduello talked about this, that we want more affordable drug options in the community of CD-8. So, when we go to CD-1 and we purchase our narcotics, including speed, we always go to the eighth district, right, Mommy? Right. And we always know there are many choices in Gamble Cock Square. You have your selection of various selected prostitutes, and they have speed on Wednesdays, two crack bars for four dollars. It's a very good thing. And of course, as you see, the chair is now taken over by the real Assistant Council President Protem, which would be correct. So, again, Gamble Cock by the Sleazy Marqueezie Harris dildo Dawson, thank you so much. And then we get to item twenty-eight, and we're going to have overnight mobile showers, mobile showers, where we can go and wash our bricks when we get off of the bus. And after we go and take a shit living in our tents, we go over to San Marino and Vermont Avenue, and we go and we take showers so we don't stink. Like Mr. Buzcaino said, his son finds a lot of black women who stink. So, you go over to one-two-zero-six South Vermont Avenue, and we will say this for Mr. Sadio in Espanol. Uno dos seis cero seis, South Vermont calle, lavanderia, suculo muy bien. And of course, in Korean. Anya ding dang bang to ta ya, South Vermont de la china. And now we get a Happy New Year to you fat fucking cunt Herb Wesson. Happy New Year. Anybody, anybody but Wesson, no on Herb Wesson for supervisor. Vote for Holly Mitchell. Vote for Jan Perry. Defeat this demon. Herb Wesson is demon-possessed. Herb Wesson can't pay his mortgage. Herb Wesson can't balance his checkbook. Herb Wesson can't stop smoking. That's why he's not here right now. He's outside on the South Lawn, smoking nine cigarettes, and killing himself with oral and lung cancer. Let's give him a hand. Thank you, Marlboro. Sixty-eight years old and won't make sixty-nine, you don't want a one-year term senator. No on Herb Wesson, yes on Holly Mitchell, yes on Jan Perry, and fuck the city!
Thank you, Mr. Spindler, your time is up, thank you. Mr. Herman?
Mr. Herman, may I remind you not to shout into the mic?
And you'll be speaking on item twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and general public comment.
Sir, I got some items to turn in for the record, for all councilmen, a letter in regards to all councilmen. Sergeant of Arms, please grab my shit. So, again, Don Campbell Cock, Campbell Square cocks, at the Crenshaw Boulevard, and the cock stalkers of the street, Don Campbell Square. They want to instruct us, transportation niggers, to erect a permanent ceremonial sign. Well, I got the best sign of all, ceremonial sign. Why is that? Because the consideration of his motion involves Harris Dawson, who's not black, but absolutely white, because he created gentrification. Then on item twenty-eight, asshole, again, South Vermont Avenue in CD-1. Sadio never gets a bad remark from me. However, regarding measure HHH, bitch, 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 off of Old Fire Station thirteen, that's my favorite number, according to Honorable Judge Jennifer H. Cops, down there in Long Beach in Division fourteen. The physical impact statement was, reports that no impact of a general fund would result in a recommendation. Why is that? Because the motherfuckers are stealing. Criminals are stealing, and we can't live in our community. Isn't that fucked up? So, my general public comment to the asshole in the East Building called East City Hall, they continue to threaten and intimidate I, the gadfly from Downey, Norwalk, Saritos, and fuck Mayor Terry Tornick of Pasadena, because you little fat pig up there, you little pigs in the horseshoe, should know better. You messed up on three TROs with Wayne Spindler, you never criminalized them for our swastika sign, because it's protected speech, constitutional protected speech. And I'd rather have you throw me out than to take my rights of censorship away. I'm an American citizen, born, natural born...
Stop, stop shouting into the mic, Mr. Herman. Stop shouting into the mic.
So long as I'm here, fuck you forty-two U.S.A.
You're disrupting... Your time is up, please. We instructed Mr. Herman not to do that. He's clearly disrupted the meeting. He wasn't paying any attention while we were trying to stop him. I suggest we ask him to leave quietly. If we could have the Sergeant-at-Arms escort him out if he doesn't leave quietly.
That's my first warning.
And now you're disrupting the meeting again, you're being ordered to leave. Mr. Herman, please leave the meeting now, you're disrupting it. We've stopped all our business while you are taking time to get out. Please go, now. Mr. Kocorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. While the members of the public are all waiting for Mr. Herman, and we are waiting to continue our business while Mr. Herman leaves, I would just like to ask council leadership to consider turning off the microphones when people begin shouting, because it's just not fair to the people who are translating the meeting, the people who are trying to put... people who are translating the meeting, the people who are trying to put subtitles up on Channel 35 who are listening to this when their physical health is actually being put at risk by these handful of people who scream into the microphone to draw attention to themselves. So I would ask that the microphones be turned off as soon as the shouting begins.
And in fact, Mr. Herman was shouting on the way out to the point where there were a few things you said. I didn't even really hear you clearly. I'll talk to you after the meeting, Mr. Krikorian, to make sure we understand correctly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Let's take up item number 27. We could open the roll, close the roll, and tally the vote.
13 aces.
That measure passes. All right, let's continue with public comment. Patricia McAllister.
Okay, good morning. I'll start with number two.
Item number 28 is what you're signed up for? That's still?
Number, I signed up for two, 28, and one, two, and three.
So 1 to 6 have actually been continued tomorrow. So it's, you've only got 28 left.
Oh, just 28 for me?
Just 28.
The rest were continued.
Okay, 28, the mobile showers. Here you want just a few mobile showers, and on Skid Row, where my people are African-Americans, you might have five. We have 20,000 homeless African-Americans on Skid Row. We need at least five public showers per block, okay? And for people who do not know, an African-American died right on the streets, right on the steps of City Hall, right before the holidays. They picked him up off the steps of the City Hall, and it was in the newspaper, on the web. This city council does nothing for African-Americans, and I want to tell the new President Nury, don't use this black and brown term, okay? It's black. It's the Browns who've taken the resources from the blacks, okay? So don't put this crap in the black and brown, okay? It's black suffering, not Browns. You don't find Browns on the street, all right? Now, my public comment, Mr. Coretts, you're running for comptroller. Do not vote for any of these members in any other capacity. Herb Wesson, how are you going to be comptroller? You're on the Finance Committee. You looking over the money, investigating, and you letting all this go on. We don't want you as a comptroller. Let me tell you what they're doing with that HHH money. They've got an apartment at 1900 West Third Street. These are studios. Now, you know how smart, how small studio apartments are. 137 studios. Guess how much this city council is allowing for each studio to be built? $309,000 per studio. This is what they're doing with our money. And why are they doing it? Because they're getting a cut of it. This, I have all of the housing that's being built. 117 projects, only a few of them going to be built this year. Most of them 2016, 20 whatever, but not for, no, three or four years. This city council, we need to disband you, get a federal investigation, and put as many as you as we can.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. With no other speakers on the queue on item 28, let's take up item 28. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tally the vote.
13 aces.
That measure passes.
Mr. President, I'd like to call item number 27 forthwith.
Without objection. Let's go back to general public comment. Sean Murphy.
Congratulations to my friend Nuri Martinez, Madam President. People should call her Madam President. My pastor and I have been praying for her. I've been praying for her throughout the holidays. I hope she does a good job, does well too. There's a few things I have suggestions for. When people scream in the microphone, they should be thrown out immediately. They cannot come into these chambers. Presentations should be moved to Fridays instead of people sitting waiting for the meeting to start. And a third suggestion, open the chambers at 9:30 instead of 9:45, damn it.
Myra Jimenez to be followed by Marina Citron and Nicholas Patino.
Good morning, council members and Madam President, when she comes back. My name is Myra Jimenez. I'm with Alcohol Justice. We're here to emphasize the concern for the lack of interest in listening to community concern for the city-level discussion of alcohol density and how the city can improve existing challenges in each district. ARIS, which is specifically what I'm talking about, council file 170117 is an opportunity that is being dismissed and ignored. We have met with all Plum members and other members of the council who are interested and have not seen respect for this discussion to continue, and we are concerned that it is coming to a close with the deadline at the end of the month. So we are here to ask that there is consideration for this discussion of ARIS because there are some council offices that are interested to hear what this has, what the Planning Department has to say so we can move forward with the discussion on addressing alcohol density for each district to address on their own. So we hope that that is being considered and that an opportunity is given for this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Marina Citron.
Hello. You guys are all familiar with LA DAPA, and that's who I'm representing here today. I'm here today to express my strong disappointment in the lack of the democratic process, specifically from the Plum co-chair, with no warning abruptly shutting down any possibility of discussion for the ARIS motion. This motion is pro-community and would protect our neighborhoods from over-concentration of more alcohol-related businesses in sensitive areas, but is being ignored. ARIS council file 17-0117 is an opt-in, customizable, flexible tool, doesn't impede on any other process or policies that exist, doesn't affect existing alcohol-related businesses within communities, would be helpful to weed out bad actors in protecting the community. It's a no-brainer. And yet, this motion will expire at the end of the month. We've been waiting three years. You can check the file and see over 300 letters and signatures all over LA County. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas Patino to be followed by Brenda Villanueva and Veronica Delara.
Good morning, city council. My name is Nicholas Patino, and I am a member of Los Angeles Drug and Alcohol Policy Alliance. I'm here to express my disappointment with the city council members who are part of the Plum Committee for not putting the alcohol-restricted use sub-district motion on the agenda. The proposed motion would allow residents to decide whether more alcohol-related businesses should open up in high-crime areas, neighborhoods already oversaturated with bars and liquor stores. ARIS was introduced in 2017, and this year, council member Marquise Harris Dawson, who is the co-chair of Plum, shut down further movement on the proposal. It is upsetting that the Plum Committee has not moved forward this very vital land-use tool, supported by hundreds of their constituents.
Thank you. Brenda Villanueva.
Good morning, honorable council. My name is Brenda Villanueva, and I am the co-chair of the Los Angeles Drug and Alcohol Policy Alliance. City file 17-0117, known as the ARIS motion, which has been sitting in Plum for three years, is set to expire soon. The motion is just asking for feasibility report on this opt-in planning tool. Even after numerous press releases, meetings with different council members, specifically Plum, research presented and substantial community support, no action has been taken. We ask that ARIS be agendized to open up the needed discussion of mitigating alcohol density in all the neighborhoods of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Veronica Delara, and I am the co-chair of the California Alcohol Policy Alliance, Kappa, and I am also a member of Los Angeles Drug and Alcohol Policy Alliance, LA DAPA. I am here to ask the council to look at council file 170117, ARIS. This motion is requesting a feasibility report on an opt-in land-use tool. Our efforts include gathering community supports, collecting data, and meeting with different council offices on ARIS. Yet, ARIS have not been given the chance to be agendized at the Plum Committee. We hope that the council will assist us in getting ARIS agendized before January 31st in the next two weeks. Members of the community just want to see a feasibility report done on this tool. It is time for the city of LA to have an opt-in tool that can assist us in molding our communities because not all of our communities look the same. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speakers will be Cassandra Mares, Milan Sinic, and Will McQuinney.
Good morning. My name is Cassandra Mares, and I am a member of the Los Angeles Drug and Alcohol Policy Alliance. Council file 17-0117, otherwise known as the ARIS motion, is set to expire on January 31st, 2020. And we are here to urge current Plum Committee members to agendaize the motion that has been sitting in committee for three years. As it stands, the motion is only asking for a feasibility study. Therefore, with its availability, it will create a much-needed discussion on alcohol density and licensing procedures in the city of LA. Therefore, I'm asking you to listen, if not to us, then to the supporters of the motion, your own constituents, and allow this discussion to happen. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Milan. I'm a member of the Los Angeles Drug and Alcohol Policy Alliance. I'm here to ask council to help us agendize ARIS council file 170117, which has been sitting at Plum for the last three years. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, council members, President. My name is Will McQuinney. As one of the Sierra Club Angeles chapters of 40,000 members, I'm proud to congratulate Nuri Martinez on her historic election as Los Angeles City Council President. Council President Martinez has earned her reputation as an effective political and environmental justice leader. That leadership is needed now more than ever. The ecology, the health, and even the economy of Los Angeles are threatened by a climate crisis that comes on top of the city's already severe pollution. To make the Green New Deal a reality, to protect the future of every resident, every family, we need leaders like President Martinez to hold the LADWP to the goal of 100% clean energy. Walking in our city parks and climbing, climbing our local mountains, I see and feel the pollution around us, and it makes me sad. But President Martinez, excuse me, you give us hope for a better future. Thank you and good luck. You have our support.
Thank you. Next speakers will be Jacqueline Richardson, Olga Ford, Annette Davis-Jackson, and Sarah Jacqueline Richardson?
Welcome to this city. This is an invitation for all and everyone in any nation to come to this city because it's a sanctuary city. I blame you and the state of California and Nancy for this overcrowding in this city. Do you realize without your invitation, all these nations would not be here? And the overcrowding, etc., would not, would not happen? There are at least four major nations here. You have the Hispanic nations, and you have three other major nations here today, and they have no intent of going home, and can you blame them? You take care of everybody. Take better care of me, too. If you have no restrictions on who comes here, then you're responsible for the overcrowding. When is the limit?
Thank you for, your time is up.
When will you limit?
Thank you. Your time's up.
Good morning. My name is Olga Ford. Good morning. My name is Olga Ford, and I'm a member of ACE, and I'm here thanking you all for the rent relief that was offered to us. And at the same time, the landlord, they're not applying to the law. And that's the most important thing that I thought that you all gave us the money for, you know? And we inviting you all to the press conference that we have in 9:00 a.m. on Friday, and we wish that some one of you all could be at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Olga.
Hello, city council. My name is Annette Davis-Jackson. I happen to live in Atlanta, Georgia, but my late father, we are heirs to a property on 62nd Street, of which is in the 9th district. Curran Price, are you Curran Price? Hello, Curran Price. The reason that I come before you today is because I'm a proud Los Angelino. I went to Fairfax High School, so proud. Today, I'm kind of crying because my late father passed in June of 2018. What somebody did is they purported themselves as my father. They wouldn't pay the taxes in the tax assessor's office for $7,557, took out a $140,000 loan the same day. The blessing is, I live in Atlanta. A good friend of mine, who I grew up with, sent me the paperwork, and I was able to call the LAPD. And the title company, Old Republic, ended up reconveying this property back to me. So it's a fraud issue in the city of Los Angeles where people are paying other people's taxes, right? And it happened to our family. I have the information here, city council. I have my email address, and I have my number. It's in court on January 22nd, but our family's not involved. The title company is trying to recover $300,000 from a lady.
I hate to tell you, but your one-minute time is up, but hopefully.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hopefully, someone from Mr. Price's office or another staff person.
Thank you. Other people had so much time.
Will speak to you and try to, try to help.
Thank you for all that you do. I appreciate it.
Thank you, and sorry for your loss and your difficulties. Sarah Blais?
Good morning, members of city council. Thanks for hearing me. My name is Sarah Blanch. I'm co-chair of the Los Angeles Drug and Alcohol Policy Alliance. I know all of you care about the health and safety of our neighborhoods. While we have a public health lens, we know that alcohol, more than opioids, more than marijuana, is hurting our neighborhoods. Right now, there are over 7,000 alcohol licenses in Los Angeles. There are 500 licenses in the application process. They're all going to be approved. They're essentially being handed out like candy. My colleagues and community members have been talking about ARIS, council item 17-0117. It's a reasonable, flexible tool that would help manage this problem. We've been having conversations with dozens of community members who've spent their time coming here over the course of the last three years, coming to Plum time and again, meeting with council. We are so disappointed this conversation is being shut down. There are literally hundreds of petitions, signatures in file. Vank has supported it. Slank has supported it. It's going to die on January 31st. We ask you to respect the democratic process, agendize it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speakers are Esperanza Q., Reda Alexander, Jolly Holamon, and Eddie Kaufman.
Muy buenos dias. Alguien va a traducir?
Muy buenos dias. Mi nombre es Esperanza.
My name is Esperanza.
Pertenecь al distrito seis.
I belong to District 6.
Estoy aquí para felicitar a Mrs. Nuri Martinez.
I am here to congratulate Ms. Nuri Martinez.
Por su ascenso y ser nuestra presidenta del Consejo Municipal de Los Ángeles.
For her appointment and for being the president of the city council members.
Estoy contenta que tenemos una mujer latina.
I am happy that we have a Hispanic woman.
Muy luchadora por las comunidades hispanas.
Who fights a lot for the Hispanic community.
Sé que usted nos puede ayudar en algunos problemas que tenemos.
I know that you can help us in some of the problems that we have.
Como la planta de gas. Como la planta de gas y el botadero de basura.
Like the gas plant and the place where they throw the trash.
En la comunidad de San Valley.
In the San Valley community.
Entre algunos otros problemas.
Among some of the problems.
De hace mucho tiempo que están afectando.
That have been affecting for a very long time.
La salud de estas comunidades de alrededor.
The health of these surrounding communities.
Podemos trabajar mano a mano con las comunidades.
We can work hand by hand with the communities.
Por nuestros hijos.
For our children.
Ya que son los jóvenes del futuro de mañana.
Since they are the youth of the future.
Queremos comunidades más limpias.
We want cleaner communities.
Libre de contaminación.
And free of pollution.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Retta Alexander.
Good morning, my name is Retta Alexander. I reside in Van Nuys and as a constituent, I'm especially pleased to congratulate Nuri Martinez on her election to presidency of City Council. I'm especially pleased that we have a champion of environmental justice in the leadership position. As you all know, the city's Green New Deal calls for the phasing out of gas operations at three power plants by 2029. I urge the City Council to include transitioning the Valley Generating Station as well in your planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Jolly Holoman. Doesn't appear to be here. Eddie Kaufman.
Hi, thank you for having me, my name's Eddie Kaufman Morrow, I come from North Hollywood, California. I go to Los Angeles Valley College and I'm also an intern for the Sierra Club. I've been working for the past year on environmental initiatives and I'm actually very happy and excited that Nuri Martinez is now going to be the president and hopefully we can work on actually changing our city to renewable resources and also listening a little bit more to the public and the youth. I see many of you not even looking at me. I'm here to hold most of you accountable for our future because I'm one of the next people who might be here one day, fighting for the same things and hopefully you can help us transition. You know LA is one of the dirtiest cities, it's very polluted, the air is very polluted here, and I hope that we can actually work with community colleges and the youth to, to work on changing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speakers are Mickey Dickie, Lucy Garcia, Tom Villa, and Dan. I'm not sure that Mickey is a real name, so Lucy Garcia.
Councilwoman Nuri Martinez, your presidency of this City Council makes me, well, almost, want to go back to teaching. Come out of retirement and teach again. It has to be an inspiration for so many of our young people in this, in this city. Thank you for all of your hard work. As a science educator, I taught about climate change and I can ensure every single member of this council that there are thousands and thousands of people who are looking at every circle that they belong to and trying to move the, the needle on climate change. And one of the first things we have to do is get the Valley Generating Station to be included in the list of stations that are slated to be shut down. We have to go to in-basin, solar power on all the roofs, let's take, you know, advantage of what California gives us and, and get solar and wind on every home and building.
Thank you. Tom Villa.
Good morning, I'm Tom Villa, I lived for the last twenty-eight years at the Santa Fe Art Colony. We thank the city for the rental assistance in November, our owner, the Fifteen Group, did everything to frustrate that, but the city came through above and beyond. Now, we are facing twenty-three pay-rent-or-quit three-day notices because we followed the state law and paid the amounts prescribed. We have a press conference with us and three buildings in the similar, in a similar situation this Friday at nine AM, and we're asking the city for swift implementation of AB fourteen eighty-two and ongoing assistance. The tenants follow state law and we follow city ordinances. Please, let's have landlords follow the same state laws and city ordinance, ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last general public comment speaker is Daniel Gus.
Thank you. Council members, my column today in City Watch is titled "Garcetti Appointee Accused of Abusing and Stalking a Pregnant Spouse." City Hall silent. Here's the restraining order in case Ms. Martinez, who's leaving the room right now, wants to see the restraining order against the pregnant spouse beater who is in the building today. Ms. Martinez, here's the first woman you can help in the City of Los Angeles, a pregnant woman whose husband was approved by this City Council. I see Ms. Martinez is not acting to find out who this beater of a pregnant woman is. Speaking of abuses, Mr. Krikorian, I have an offer of $8,900 from the city attorney's office that you're going to end up paying me for the misconduct of a deputy city attorney. It may end up being a lot more, but Ms. Martinez, let it be known, is ignoring the pregnant spouse beater who's in this building.
Thank you. And Mr. Spindler, you've been wandering around the aisles, making distracting motions and trying to disrupt this meeting. This is your last warning. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Those are posted and referred.
That clears the desk, sir.
Members, any announcements? Seeing none, let's rise for adjourned motions. I'm looking to my left, Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you. Members, I, I know that a lot of us lost loved ones and friends over the, and constituents over the break. During our recess, we lost a beloved member of the San Pedro community, Bonnie Christensen. She died peacefully on January third due to complications of Alzheimer's disease. She was born the youngest child of Samuel and Reza Nelson on May twenty-six, nineteen thirty-one, in Iowa. Throughout her life, she was a volunteer and an active member of our community as a senior lead. She was very active with me and my neighborhood watch groups and my business watch groups and with LAPD. She was a staunch supporter of the men and women of the LAPD Harbor Division. She was the San Pedro Woman of the Year in nineteen eighty-seven and she is the Bonnie of the Vic and Bonnie Maps Science and Technology Center and was a campfire girl leader for five years. She was on the San Pedro Bicentennial Committee and earned many awards for community service from the Military Lions Club, LAPD Harbor, UCLA Biomed Research Institute, as well as state and local government officials. She received awards from various PTAs from the schools her children attended, continuing service awards from the state PTA and was co-founder of the Harbor Association of Gifted and Talented Students. Bonnie was also a kitchen engineer and worked for the L Unified School District as a community liaison. Her parents and five siblings, as well as her husband Vic, preceded her in death. She leaves behind her children and more and Victor, who she always strived the best for. She also leaves behind her two grandchildren, Heather and Brayden, her great-grandson, grandson Maverick, and her longtime companion, the Honorable Dr. Gerald Philando. Funeral service will be held this Saturday, January eighteenth, at the Christ Lutheran Church, and in lieu of flowers, Bonnie has requested donations to the Lions Project for Canine Companions for Independence. Bonnie Christensen, a, just a true champion, a community advocate for our San Pedro community, may she rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. I'm still looking to my left, not seeing anyone. I'm looking to my right, Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, on Sunday, the San Fernando Valley suffered a tragedy of the kind that we suffer far too often. And some of you may have heard about it on the, on the news when Sheriff's Deputy Amber Leest was trying to help another fellow Angelino get across the street, an elderly woman who'd fallen in a crosswalk. And Detective Leest had parked her car, she was stopped for a red light, she immediately leapt out of her car to go and assist this woman in need. And she helped her and she saved the woman's life. But sadly, in the process of doing so, she lost her own life when she was struck by a car. It was not a hit-and-run case, but she was struck by a car and later died of her injuries. It was the sort of thing that I think catches all of our attention because this was a woman who devoted her life to service as a sheriff's deputy. She was a school resource officer, she handled most of the domestic violence calls in the West Hollywood Station. She was somebody who was a, truly an empathetic, caring person like so many of our officers in law enforcement who are serving in order to help others. That's exactly what she was doing when she sadly gave her life in Valley Village at the corner of Riverside and Witsit. So I ask that we adjourn in Amber Leest's memory. She is survived by her parents and her two sons, twenty and seventeen-year-old sons, who'll have to live the rest of their life without their mother because of this tragic crash that occurred. I ask that we adjourn in her memory, but I also ask that we take a moment in her honor to remember the risks that we create when we are in our automobiles. And to take a moment to be more attentive, to maybe drive a little less quickly, take your foot off the gas, pay attention to the road, look at what's in front of you so that we can reduce the number of these sorts of senseless tragedies that the City of Los Angeles experiences far too often. Amber Leest was forty-one years old, she gave her life in service to the people of Los Angeles, may she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. And I know in my former city of West Hollywood that she was not only well-respected but beloved for her work and there are many in the city that are stunned at her loss and deeply saddened, so thank you for bringing that up. Mr. Buscaino, I believe you had an introduction.
Yeah, I failed and forgive me, colleagues, I wanted to recognize during the introductions, I want to recognize our Harbor Area Planning Commissioner, John Bagakas, who's here, and the San Peter Democratic President, San Peter Democratic Club President, Shannon Ross, thank you for joining us and appreciate your presence. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Looking to my right, do not see any other adjournments, so this meeting is adjourned.